All right, at six o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we approve the agenda, did anyone need to remove anything from the consent agenda? Are there any questions pertaining to the consent agenda? If not, be looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Matt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. General public comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak tonight? I only see a couple folks on. Yes, Mary Beth.
Hi, guys. I just wanted to quickly say that I reached out to our Friends of Education, men and women tonight, and I just wanted to bring up that we're having, I guess, a little bit of stalemate, providing funding to the actual structure of the outdoor classroom. We went to the town board of Middletown about the ARPA funds. And unfortunately, those were all spoken for after the town office, you know, went a little over budget or was, you know, more expensive than planned. And then we also talked to Cory and Ashley about the extra SR funds. And Louis just kind of described that unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to use those funds in the actual building of the outdoor classroom. So that was just something that the girls I spoke to tonight kind of just wanted to bring that to your attention, and maybe we can further talk about it as the budget process goes forward. And then that kind of leads me to my next little tidbit of, you know, a bunch of months ago, on another school board meeting, I just brought up the fact that when I was substituting a few times in September, that, you know, since our buildings are historic and old, they were kind of built for large windows and lots of light. But unfortunately, with no central AC, it can be very warm in the classrooms. Especially with the older grades, they're in the original building, so they have huge, beautiful windows and lots of light, but unfortunately, it gets very, very hot in there. So I was in a second grade classroom a few times, and each time it was well above eighty. So I know that I brought it to Cory's attention, and she was obviously well aware of it. Just because it affects the way teachers are able to teach and kids are able to learn. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there as well, as far as, hopefully, maybe that was brought to your attention as far as budgeting, and if not, maybe we can, you know, start a conversation around that. So that was it. Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Everyone should have received all the information. So be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, as is.
I'll make that motion if nobody else did.
Yeah, nobody did. All right, thank you, Cara. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I guess the only thing, the only comment I just wanted, I just wanted to make on one of the resignations. Except the resignation with regret, I guess. It was for Susan Rosso. And the only reason why I bring it up, she's, she's been at the school for how many years? That's what I understood, but I didn't know how long.
I don't know how many years, a long time.
Okay.
I think she started when I was still in elementary school, so the early to mid nineties. At least as a substitute.
Okay. All right, I'll move on to reports. I have the superintendent's report.
Thanks, Eric. Just have a few items. At this time of the year, majority of our focus is on budget and preparation for town meetings. I do have a few items in the reports that I just do review. At the, this month's GRCSU Board meeting, I did provide strategic plan updates. I did provide a copy of the board folders, as well as I've encouraged the board members to read over a copy of the GRCSU minutes, which is a kind of a overview of what's covered. And if anyone in the public would like to to view that, I haven't finished. We'll share a copy of the the video. It's also on fake TV, as well as when we post the minutes, they'll be a copy of that as well. In the folders as well, we did place a copy of the warning for the board to review. Obviously, the numbers are not correct, they've not been filled in. But it's more for the board, just to take a look at the layout, the language of the warning, just to see if they're okay with that. And if there are any suggestions, edits, formatting changes they would like, just let myself or Justin make us know if you can making those changes around that. I do want to note that the language around, most around the budget has changed this year. Last, last year, many school districts across the state began to shift the language. We did not. We had a kind of a one-year grace period. So this year, we have changed our language in terms of how we report. That's just a big notice that in the warning as well. So if any questions you have, myself or Louis, we'll be more happy to review that with you. I also have included a copy of, a very long copy in the board back around the FAQ around Act 172. I know that that is, you know, a bit of concern around funding, you know, that Louis will talk a little bit about this in detail. I think, you know, Wells Springs, this boardless district have been have been okay with regard to this, but I think others have been disadvantaged. But this gives some nice information on ECOQ, and I think, you know, like I said, Louis, as we presented last night at Rutland Town Board meeting, did a very nice job of breaking it down and just kind of kind of talking about what this really means for boards and taxpayers over the next four or five years. You know, we talk, you hear a lot about the answer cliff that we navigated very nicely, that we were okay there, but the next clip for us to navigate would be Act 172 cliff, that's the next five years. So should be our, but just something for our, you know, for our boards to consider as we budget, you know, this year, as well as upcoming years. And that's, at this time, that's really about it. The rest is informational. If any questions, be more happy to answer at this time.
So when you say Act 172 cliff?
Yes.
What exactly does that mean? I mean, is, is it gonna be, are we gonna be?
So I'll let Louis, because I think, I think Louis will do better. I'll cover it. Do you want to answer it now, or do you want to talk about it during budget time?
We could talk about during budget, yeah, okay.
And I'm not trying to scare anyone, but it's just that you'll hear that term a lot in, you know, media, you know, in the newspapers, and I think people understand what that really means. And there are some districts that really should not be concerned, while there should be, just navigating. But like I said, Louis will talk a little bit more about this in his budget discussion, so.
Okay, that's fine. All right. Did anyone else have any questions? All right. All right, principals' reports.
So as a school staff, one of the things that we've done is we're, we're starting to prepare a PIS system. As a whole, looking for a way to strengthen our approach towards beginning interventions. As staff of students took a school climate survey, which is an anonymous survey put out by PIS. And actually, our fifth and sixth graders will be using the data collected from this to work with Up for Learning to create a school plan to improve our school climate. And staff, we also send out a survey to parents. We'll be using that information at the staff, and that staff are also asked to fill out information. So we're just looking at strengthening that as a whole. Let's see, some, we've got some fun things coming up. We've got a school-wide activity day that's planned for that half day in December. All teachers have been asked to plan an activity for kids. So we've got things ranging from like creating gingerbread houses to cross-country skiing if we have snow, reindeer games in gym, to slime making. So we've got a whole array of things, and kids are going to get to pick three activities and rotate throughout the day. And it's been, it's been really nice because we've had staff, we, we have staff like our occupational therapist and our speech and language pathologist who are in our buildings for a half a day to a day, just once a week. And we've even had some of them reach out, ask if they could be part of it. So that's, that's really nice to see. Our rock climbing team started this month. They actually just started on Monday. We have over twenty students on our team, which is like a third of our student body. So it is, it is huge in Middletown, and I guess last year they placed second, so it's, it's a pretty big deal. And then the, the, one of the changes that we made, we had to make a shift in our after-school program from, we were running under our pre-K license, and we lost a staff member. And so because of that, we had, we were having difficulty sticking to the ratio required by that pre-K license. So we switched to a single skills program similar to what Wells does. And the kids seem to be really enjoying it. Looking forward to having Eric come and teach the kids how to yo-yo. They've been making ornaments and bird feeders. They've got, similar to what Wells does, they've got a single skill that they work on for the week, and they've got activities that they do. So it's been, we're looking to eventually switch back through the licensed program because there are benefits to that. But in the meantime, this has been working out well.
Right. I, I had a few questions. So the, the school climate survey?
Yes.
I know in the past, and I think it was pre-COVID, has that been done every year? Do you know?
I am not sure. I know it's been done the past few years. So we do have, I'm able to access the data from previous years.
Okay.
The, we, we do seem to be missing one set of data. We thought that it was also done in the spring of last year, and we don't have that, but we do have the fall of last year. So we do have, we have multiple years. So the kids have looked for trends over the years to see, you know, where, where were, where were areas that we needed to improve upon, you know, last fall compared to this fall, and what changes the kids made to boost school climate. And if those changes were impactful.
All right. And so do the, the kids actually look at this, do?
So the kids, what we do is, it is anonymous for, the online one is anonymous for older kids or younger kids. We do paper copy, and it's completely anonymous for them as well. And so the, the fifth and sixth graders look at the overall data. So we look at, you know, they're asked a question like, I like school. And so we let the kids know, you know, in first grade, here what the first graders think, you know, they have a rating scale of one to five. One being low, and they don't really like school, and five being, I love school. And so they get to see what the average is by grade for each of the questions. And then they, they identify those areas where maybe their scores.
Okay. I didn't realize that it was, I got that specific, so. And the parent climate survey, is that new, or is that another?
I'm not sure if that one's been done before. We, we kind of threw it out there just to see what happened. I am not sure there is a lot of data from previous years on that. So.
Yeah, the parent, the parent and, and staff survey as well. So were the staff doing it too?
So the staff, the staff were doing it too, and I do believe they've done it in the past as well.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I couldn't remember because it's, I know, maybe it was back in 2019, we saw some of the, the the climate survey stuff, but it's been a while. And it kind of answered one of my questions about the, the rock climbing team. You said they placed second. Now, my question was, is they compete? And where are they competing?
So, good question. So they practice at the Green Mountain Rock Climbing Center in Rutland once a week, and then once, like, February events, I believe, they have competitions on Saturday. I'm not sure if they are all at the Green Mountain Rock Climbing Center, or if there are other gyms.
It's just at that one.
There you go. So they, so all of their competitions are at Green Mountain Rock Climbing Center in Rutland.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. That's all I have. Did anyone else have any questions for Cory? Okay, Carol?
We actually are doing the same kind of Up for Learning, but it's our fourth grade. We did a school climate survey already. Fourth graders are actually ones that are going to go and administer it for the younger kids. And we will start that process and, and analyze any data and having those speeches about for learning in January. We're also starting a new program with our school counselor in January, doing weekly meetings based on relationship building and kind of parallels goes along with what we're doing with restored practice. But she'll be in the class specifically working on relationships and helping them develop the relationships they need to be in the school setting. Probably the, the one thing, the concern that has continues is our is our problem with having subs. So we have not been fully staffed probably since mid-October. I don't think we've had a day where we've been fully staffed. And I do have to thank our teachers because our IAs step up and help us and are very flexible in changing positions and making sure that we can cover everything that we need to cover. We also, just over the weekend, Cory and I did an event here where it was a four-hour drop-off for families to drop kids off, so they can go do whatever they wanted to do. Like, we were hoping it was going to be a little bit more popular, but it was a lot of fun. The kids had a great time. They played games, baked cookies, watched a movie.
They did a lot of these.
And they did that one for hours. So that was, yeah. And I guess lastly, the one thing I had forgotten to put in here is that we will be starting just, and we were able to award three scholarships. We had put out a contest and had kids write an essay if they, about why sports was important, why like, um, sport, sports are important. And we were able to award three scholarships.
And about the, the staffing challenge, is that just for trying to get subs, or?
Yeah, we are, I'm gonna say, and Cory and I were talking about this earlier. We said, our staff puts in when they know that they need a day off for an appointment or whatever. Some of them are in there for two weeks, a month. They're not, they're not sales. And so then we just have to make adjustments, staff, so that we make sure everything's covered.
And did, did, did you ever, well, I know he sent an email about the, the PA system. Did you ever get a response from the, the guy from audio?
No, we were just talking about it.
Okay.
Had sent us an email about wanting to come visit, and the timing was not.
It was like, it was like this day before.
Right. So we need to take that back.
Because it really isn't, like, what we do, a school-wide announcement, you can't hear it in here if the dishwasher's running. Like, the PE teacher couldn't hear it in here. It's, we end up using our walkie-talkies if it's something that's really
Yep.
important that we have to say right away.
Yeah. Yeah, just curious, because I think they've got the activities. Okay. All right. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, we'll move on to.
Sorry, I had a question.
Go ahead.
Are, are, are rates competitive in terms of finding staff for, for teachers that are, you know, put in their PTO like two months ahead? Is it just that it, there's, there's a lack of people out there, or is it that we are coming in really under what we need to be in to staff temporary positions?
But I think it's a variety of reasons. So we did just raise our rates to sixteen dollars an hour from they were at fifteen. That's probably still less competitive than some of our surrounding schools, especially New York, where we border. When we looked at, we surveyed some area schools, and a few of them were at eighteen dollars and above. The only one that was less than us was Mill River. So that's definitely playing partially into the problem. I think the other piece is just a, a lack of people in the job market, and that's a struggle with many of our positions. Both support staff, teaching, and as well as definitely subs.
You know, Matt, I'm talking with regional superintendents, do pay a little bit more than us. They're still having issues finding subs as well. So while, you know, I guess Louis said rate of pay is one factor, it's just that we do, are dealing with a depleted workforce as well, just for individuals who are moving in. And we have actually found across the SU is we identify substitutes. A lot of times, the substitutes will then move into a pair position because we have such a need for pairs with sports staff, and then that really further completes our sub pool because we are, you know, finding good, you know, good individuals who want to work for us on a regular basis. So we, we already sent Robin Peter to pay for all, you know, it's kind of stopping, you know, addressing one issue, but still creating another.
Follow-up on that. What's, I, I know you've, I've heard this before, and I, I'm sorry for asking again, but what's, what's, what are the requirements to, to be a substitute? I'm, I'm assuming a background check, and are there any other trainings that are necessary? And could we do like, could we, could we almost put on like a free clinic or something to help get community members in there? Go ahead.
To be just a general sub, they have to go through the same requirements as an employee, so the background check, fingerprinting, stuff like that. But there's no specific training requirements. If they're going to sub in one of our preschool programs, then there is extra trainings. I would say roughly about fifteen to twenty hours are the trainings that they would need to participate in, in order before they can move into that role. But, I mean, we have people ranging from high school, high school diplomas to bachelors, former retired teachers. So there is, there is a range, but there is no specific requirements. I mean, obviously, the more education and experience, the better, but we, we have individuals that just have high school diplomas that are working, maybe they're going to college or, or stay-at-home parents or anything, stuff like that.
I'm just spitballing, but maybe there's an opportunity where we invite people in and invite to pay for their background check or whatever fingerprinting costs there are, and give an orientation of like what it is to be a teacher. Hopefully pull people from the community to step in and make sixteen bucks an hour to teach our kids. Could be fun. But.
If there's any community events that are happening that you think would be a good opportunity, our sub coordinator does go out to the community. She was at the, the lawn sale. She's been to craft fairs. Any events that are gonna draw community members, because that's really what we're looking to pull, community members. Parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, people that are, want us to be in the schools part-time. So it, like I said, if there's a community event that's coming up and that you think would be great, just let me know, and I could let my sub coordinator know so that she can either register for the event or, or make the arrangements, whether it's even nights, weekends, she does them.
That's really cool. I had no idea. Thank you.
I just have a quick question. Is public question time over?
Uh, yeah, but there's another one at the end of the agenda, so you'll have time to, to speak. Okay. Yeah, so the, and in case folks didn't know, the, the, all the subs are coordinated at the SU level, right?
Yes.
And, so, okay. All right, so we'll move on to finance.
So the first item of business is to approve an announced tuition. So each year, we have to set a tuition rate for both of our schools. It's, it's the same rate for both schools for kindergarten through sixth grade, and that would be for students who are non-residents that may be attending our schools. Periodically, we do get some students. It's typically from higher students that are attending Middletown. But it is possible that you could have a tuition student attending as well, as well. I don't think we've, I don't think we've had one in the past, but anyway, we, so the, in the packet, I have provided what our current rate is. Right now is fifteen thousand five hundred, and I've also provided what some of the area elementary schools are charging. And I have also provided what the state average is, and my recommendation for next year, which is a one thousand dollar increase with a rate of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Any questions for Louis? We'd be looking for a motion to approve the FY25 announced tuition rate. Do you remember what it was the year before? I can't remember how much it, it was the previous. Okay.
So FY23 was fifteen thousand. We increased it by three percent. This year, the increase is a little bit more. We are a little behind other schools, as well as the state average. So I did a thousand instead of the five hundred.
Okay, yeah, that was my next question. It, like, is a percentage, how much? Okay. Well, I'll make the motion to approve the recommended announced tuition rate. Any, any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Amanda? Any opposed? Two.
Why do you come to me first on that one?
Because I didn't, I wasn't looking, so I didn't know if you said yes or no. All right. All right, motion carries. All right. That's good.
Okay, on to budget. So tonight, we're looking at the second draft. We did present the draft last month. When we looked at the first drafts, I provided a summary of changes, and that is all, I also kept that on tonight's chapter twelve, so if you weren't at the last meeting, or if you forgot what, what we discussed last meeting, all of the highlights are on that first page under summary of changes draft one. So the draft one expense was up by a hundred ninety-two thousand, which was three point three percent. And, and some of those main drivers, I've listed, health insurance and benefits are always one, two of the biggest drivers. Health insurance benefits, wage increases. So I've listed some of those other things as well. Looking at draft two, again, I've highlighted some of the major highlights. Right now, budgeted expense is up by four point five percent. It's an increase of approximately sixty-eight thousand over the first draft. Some of the changes that are really driving that are SU budget, which was approved, was not in the first draft, it's in the second draft. We updated vocational tuition. Secondary tuition is in here. I've estimated a three percent increase in tuition. We do have a slight decrease in students, which, even with the increase in tuition rates, it is resulting in a fifteen thousand dollar decrease. And that tuition, or the student decrease, is mainly a result of the twelfth grade class that's graduating is a lot larger than the sixth grade class that's moving up. So you tend to see that some years. It's always better when it's that direction than it is the other direction, because from a budget standpoint. And then the other things that are in here are the removal of the small schools grant under revenue. And the reason for that is with Act 127, and I'll go into a whole Act 127. And the reason for that is with Act one twenty seven, and I'll go into a whole Act one twenty seven. Um explanation in a few minutes, but Act one twenty seven uh does account for small rural, small, small schools. And um if you meet certain criteria, you're getting an extra percentage of students in the in the student count. And it removes the small schools grant. And in this case, it actually works in. Well Springs' favor to get the extra students um over the revenue piece. Uh so and I think. Uh it it was an extra, I believe it was an extra about fifty thousand dollars in revenue. Based on the student count as opposed to the hundred seventy thousand dollar grant. So so those are the the major highlights. If there's any questions on those, I'll go into more details on. Tax rate calculation and Act one twenty seven. Okay, so Act one twenty seven, uh FY twenty five will be the first year that we're we're now looking. Uh at our tax rates under that funding formula. Uh this is the change, right now we're under Act sixty eight. And and the biggest change is the way pupils are weighted um in the tax rate calculation. So in Act sixty eight, uh you had, you took an ADM count at the beginning of the school year. ADM stands for average daily membership. So day eleven through day thirty, you you counted how many students were in your building. Uh and and that resulted in an ADM number. So if you had fifty students, you had fifty ADM. It's one for one. If a student. Moved into your school in the middle of that ADM count, you got partial credit for that student. But if the students were there for the full period, you got a full credit for that student. With the Act sixty eight, they took your ADM and they weighted it based on level of instruction. So if you had an elementary student, they were weighted at one. If you had a secondary student, you were weighted at one point one three. You had a preschool student, they were weighted at point four six. But that was really the biggest extent of the weighting that occurred in Act sixty eight. So they 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 took those weighted numbers and they took a two-year average and they gave you an equalized pupils number. Equalized pupils, you was a dividing number. You took your education spending divided by your equalized pupils to come up with a. Spending per pupil. Would Act twenty one twenty seven, um it it changes the way those numbers are weighted. And and it puts a lot more emphasis upon poverty and free reduced populations. So it takes your ADM and it looks at how many students you have that are eligible for free and reduced. It it looks at the size of your school, it looks at the size of your population. And it applies weighting factors based on those three categories as well as ELL, uh which is English language learners. We don't currently have any in our issue, so we don't get any of that weighting. Based on that new weighting funding formula, there's some districts who are. Um who are in high poverty areas, who are seeing a a big increase in their pupil count. And they will see be extremely advantaged by the change in this law. For those districts that are in um towns with extremely low poverty rates. Uh they're gonna see not as big of an increase in their pupil count and they're gonna be extremely disadvantaged. By the change in this law. And then you have those districts who are sort of in the middle, um have average poverty rates and and they're, they're not seeing. A big change uh in in their funding. Uh Wells Springs, um fortunately falls in somewhere in the middle and this this law is not having a significant impact. Uh on your, on your funding. When Chris was speaking earlier about a financial cliff because of Act one twenty seven, really what that refers to. Is that there is a piece of the law that states because there are some districts who are extremely disadvantaged. By the change in the funding formula, uh the the most that your tax rate could increase. During this period of implementation, which is the next four years. There is a five percent cap on what your tax rate could increase for for the district. The CLA is applied after that, so you could see a change greater than or less than five percent based on your CLA. But pre CLA, the 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 most that your tax rate can increase is five percent. The only exception to that is if your education spending per pupil increases by more than ten percent. In any year, then you do not qualify, then you would have to go in front of a re- a review board. And the review board could determine whether you qualify still for that five percent cap. As soon as you lose that five percent cap, you lose it for good. You're no longer eligible during this implementation period. Which again is FY twenty five to FY twenty nine. So if if you've reached that cap of five percent, um so let's let's use a hypothetical situation. If if you're, if you're disadvantaged by the change in this law and your tax rate was gonna go up fifteen percent. But then you're capped at that five percent, that ten percent doesn't go, doesn't go away. It's just going to the, going to the side. For for this current year. And you you're that, it's. It's being funded by the other districts in the state who are not reaching that five percent. And then the following year, again, if you um have an increase of ten percent and you hit that five percent cap. You're only paying the five percent, but that other five percent is still building up. And it's just be kicking the can down the road. So in FY thirty. Those thresholds, that five percent cap goes away. So if you've had a ten percent increase every year and you've only had a five percent increase in your tax rate. Those five percents have been building up, and that's the cliff that Chris was referring to. Uh so because in FY thirty, districts are going to see the full tax rate. There's no, gonna be no more hold harmless. Five percent threshold. During the period of FY twenty five to FY twenty nine, districts that are disadvantaged and are seeing those increases above those five percents. Are supposed to be working with their boards to find efficiencies, cut their budget, or. Be communicating with the community, communicating with the communities to let them know that. In order to fund our schools and fund them at these levels, they're going to see a tax rate increase in FY thirty. Um so it's it's sort of a a four-year implementation period to give districts time to either plan. Or make cuts so that they can soften that blow uh at at the end. Again, fortunately for Wells Springs, it's not gonna have a huge impact. And and so if you go to page. Uh the tax rate sheet, on page nine. I'll walk through. The process. Um so we take your education spending and let's look at the the one to the left, uh the grid to the left. We take your education spending, which is your total expense, minus your local revenues, local revenues or anything other than property taxes. So it's tuition revenue, interest income, um stuff like that. Your your FY twenty five education spending is five point eight million. And you divide it by your, it used to be equalized pupils, which is now long-term weighted ADM. So if you look at that second line, in FY twenty four, your equalized pupils was two sixty six. The new long-term weighted ADM is four hundred and seventy four students. Um so that's really um shows you how the weighting has really changed. Um so. Uh and and your small schools are playing into that, small schools piece, your FRL numbers. Uh so you take your education spending divided by your long-term weighted ADM to get your edu- education spending or long-term weighted ADM. To come up with twelve thousand three hundred eighty five dollars. If you go to that grid below that, uh the next piece of the puzzle is the property yield. Uh so the property yield is recommended by the tax commissioner and on December first. And then it's approved by the legislators usually in April or May. Uh in FY twenty four, the property yield was fifteen thousand four seventy nine. Uh but due to the increase in pupil count, so the pupil counts increase statewide based on this new fund, this new formula that they've developed. And because the the pupil count has increased so significantly. There's still only the same amount of money in the ed fund. So. What it's in order to generate the same amount of money, they need to decrease the state yield. So they take the the equalized pupils and the state yield, the sort of factors that are developed in order to take this, the ed bunch divided. Um on a district level. So you take your spending per pupil divided by the property yield to get up your unified tax rate. So your unified tax rate is a dollar thirty one. Uh your unified tax rate in FY twenty four was a dollar thirty three. So you're actually seeing a two percent or a two cent decrease in your tax rate. Uh even though your education spending is up six point eight eight percent. Uh the next piece of the calculation is the CLA. Uh right now I'm using last year's numbers because I don't have current year numbers yet. Uh which gives you the tax rates that are seen on the sheet, dollar fifty two and a dollar fifty seven for Middletown and Wells. Um so again, it it's resulting in a two point eight cent decrease for Middletown and a two point nine cent decrease. For Wells. So the three pieces though that are still pending and can change are the CLA, which which you have. In the next week. The property yield, which is just an estimate at this point, it can change up or down. Um and the equalized pupils long-term weighted ADM, uh which is just a preliminary number. So to speak, I'll speak to each of those two as far as where I, what my thoughts are. Um speaking about CLA first, so CLA is the common level appraisal that compares the fair market value to your assessed value of your home. Um as you can see, they're both in the mid eighties, uh and that is because over the last few years, we've seen skyrocketing home prices. We do know that home prices have slowed with the increase in in interest rates, so. Uh I am hopeful that we should see with one of those years dropped, it's a three-year average, so with one of those years dropping off, that was a hot year. And this with a new year sort of of slowing home prices, I'm hoping that CLA rates do stay steady. Or possibly see a small uptick. The property yield, um so there's two factors that could affect the property yield. Um so the first factor is that the tax commissioner's recommendation as as represented in his letter. Is based on a twelve percent increase in educational spending statewide. Uh I, my personal opinion is I think that's a high estimate. Um none of our districts in our issue are anywhere close to twelve percent. Um and I've spoken with several of the planners who are not at twelve percent either. So I do think that is going to be a high estimate. We should see uh an offset to that yield, which would drive the yield up. Um which would further lower tax rates i- if it came in below the twelve percent. The offset to that is that for all of those districts who are exceeding the five percent. That money still needs to be funded somehow. So if you have a district who spent ten percent with their tax rates being capped at five. That other five percent has to be funded. And the way that that's currently being funded is it's being split across. All the other districts of the state. And that is going to drive the yield down. So that factor driving the yield down and um the twelve percent possibly being an overinflated number driving the yield up. Will offset each other to some degree. I I would imagine we will see a change in the nine four five two. I don't really know where it's gonna go, but I. I I have a feeling that it might go up slightly. Again, going up will bring tax rates down. Uh the last piece, equalized pupils, um again, that was a preliminary number. Uh one factor that really does impact this is FRL numbers. And uh so so two pieces on that, if you look at the the column on the right. Um and you look at that same long-term rated ADM, the columns, the the chart on the right. Is looking at if Act one twenty seven wasn't placed last year. And so they they've been calculating the long-term rated ADM for the last three years, uh based on the calculations that have been provided. And so based on last year's data, the long-term rated ADM was four forty six. So a- and this year it's four seventy four, so that's an increase of about thirty students. You have not seen an increase of thirty students. You've actually seen this decrease in enrollment at Wells Springs. The main change that's driving that is an increase in your FRL numbers. Uh so a- and the driver for that is that they made a change this year that. Any students that qualify for Medicaid are now directly certified. So it is bringing our FRL numbers up. District-wide and statewide. The positive piece to this is that this number does not represent any students that are attending out of state or. Private schools. Uh none of those students have been captured as being FRL eligible. I've been working with our data manager over the last two weeks and and reaching out to all of our private schools and out-of-state schools. To try to to figure out which students would be eligible, whether it's based on applications that they've submitted. Um or whether they have students in our schools. That are in the same household who are either directly certified or who have filled out applications, so that we can make more of these students eligible. Um increasing our FRL percentage and bringing up our uh pupil count. So I do anticipate an increase in this number, which should have a very positive impact on your tax rate. I guess I'll open it up to questions and then we can go from there.
Uh Meredith?
Sorry, I had to find you. Um really basic question, the difference between. Budgeted expenses and education. Expense.
Education spending is your total expense minus your local revenue. So you take your, you take your expenses, you subtract anything other than property taxes. So it's your tuition revenue, your interest income. Um it was your small schools grant, which you don't have anymore, but um.
So when we're um, when we have a warning out, it's it's a four point fi- at least if it, we went with draft two. It's a four point five percent increase on our budget, not a six point eight percent, correct?
So that actually, that piece of the language has actually been removed. Uh it was removed last year. Uh as part of Act one twenty seven, so this year the warning will just have the total expense amount.
Okay.
But in in the past, if we were using last year's language, it would have been your. It would have been your total uh spending per pupil. Which is really, um if you look at the data this year, because your pupil count has increased so significantly. The data wouldn't be uh reliable, because you, right now you're showing a forty percent decrease in your spending per pupil. Just your pupil count is almost doubled.
So it's really difficult to compare these numbers with last year's.
It is, yes. It it should get easier as we um. As the, all of this data stabilizes over the next years and we have historical data that matches the same methodologies.
Uh and so I kind of wanted to go back to um and it's just. Just trying to understand the um the the long-term weighting ADM. You said that, you know, our numbers, um we don't have numbers for. Um students that are out of duris- district, right?
Out of state.
Out of state.
Private schools.
So that would be like our secondary students, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And, okay, so I guess that's kind of a. I don't, maybe just a basic question. I didn't realize that even the second ser- secondary students, you know, fell into this, I just, you know. Okay, so, alright.
So and one thing that we need to work on for next year is uh it's something that we're learning this year and running into an issue is. Uh so some of our private schools that we send students to do not participate in the federal lunch program. So they don't collect free and reduced data, they don't pull down direct cert information. Um for out-of-state schools, same issue. Um for out of state schools, same issue, either they they're pulling direct cert date, direct cert data. Down only from their own state, so they're not pulling Vermont students. And they may be C E P, which means they're not cl- C E P is everybody eats free, so they're not. Collecting F R L data applications. So I I think we need to work on a process for any of our students. Who are going to an out of state school or to a private program to provide them the household income form. And and ask them to complete it, even though their school may not be participating. Because it does, it, for every student that we can make eligible, we're we're gaining, I believe, close to one pupil count. Which you could have, could have a significant impact on our budget, so I mean, if we're sending, say fif- if our free and reduced percentage is approximately approximately fifty percent. Uh for the district and we're sending twenty kids to a s- private school that doesn't participate in the federal program. That's potentially ten students that we're losing out on um generating income as as far as in this new calculation. It's really putting us at a disadvantage for for not having that data, and so we do need to to work on. Figure out how we can get that data from those schools.
Alright, that makes sense, Meredith?
So I'm, I was just trying to find it, um I I believe Long Trail reached out to families about that data. Um and I'm not sure if they were referring, saying that the state is requiring them to do that. Or or I I can't find the original email and um but they they were asking that, it was like a a survey. Um which I don't know how they were collating that data, like if, how it was identified or if it was not. But I, somebody seems to be trying to collect it from the independent schools.
So I don't, I don't know if this is a recent thing that they just sent, but last week we reached out to all of our independent schools. Um and and asked them for that data, uh we did find out from Long Trail that they don't participate in the federal lunch program. So they they told us they don't have that data, um so they may have reached out to parents. Um i- it's not something that we're required to provide. Uh well, we were required to provide an answer for that field in the data collection that we've sent to the state. But if we don't have that data, we just, we put that they're not eligible. Um s- so parents, the same thing currently with F R L, um free and reduced, F F R L since free and reduced. Parents are not required to fill out an application, we encourage them to fill out the application because it benefits the school in many different ways. Um this is the newest way, which has the biggest impact, but it also affects our our title funding, which is our grant funding. It impacts other grants, it it impacts many revenue streams that the school gets, so it's important that families. To complete that data, again, they're not required to, but we really encourage them to.
Do you think you'll have issues getting that information from like New York schools at all, or is that kind of the same situation?
Uh so the New York school, they get back to us with a with a couple of students that they received applications on. Um s- so we we were able to count, I think it was three students, which is not anywhere close to the percentage we should be seeing. So I I think it's a matter of working with them to really push them completing those forms. And and maybe push is not the right word, but um including those for our forms. Uh there's both a an online link or a paper form that they complete. Um because Granville being our biggest out of state school, they are a C E P school, so they're, again, they they feed all students. Vermont feeds all students, but that is a state decision, C E P is a federal program which allows you to feed all students. And C E P was in place long before the state universal meals program. Because Granville is the C E P school, they are not pushing the F R L data a- as much. Because they're getting probably high direct cert numbers directly from the state. Direct cert is students who are directly certified for free and reduced lunch based on state programs that they may be part of, like SNAP. Uh three squares from uh or whatever the state of, the from New York State deployments are. They're usually like uh uh food assistance or welfare or any of those type of programs. If you're part of those, you're directly certified by the state as free and reduced.
Okay. Alright, uh so I have a few questions. Um on page two, in regards to the budget, um. Uh. And I can't remember if we talked about this last month, but uh on page two at the bottom, under direct instruction, it says. Uh. Uh where it says S U bill back regular, it, there was nothing there for for this year, but. Um so you, so you added an additional amount for for bill backs?
So this is a position that in last year was budgeted under teacher wages. So this is uh this for Middletown, this is their interventionist position. So last year, it was budgeted under teacher wages because it was budgeted as a uh a w- uh Middletown position. Which it is still, but it was budgeted as being paid directly by Middletown. That position was moved to an S U position because it's par- partially funded through grant funds. And just the piece that's not funded through grant funds is built back to Middletown. So typically, you would see an increase in teacher wages from year to year because you have. Your increases in contractual increases, but if you look on that first line, you're actually seeing a decrease in teacher wages. There's no staff changes there, uh but it's because that position moved from uh a payroll position to. A bill back, so those two lines offset each other.
Okay, that makes sense, uh Meredith?
Sorry, um I hate to go back to that, but I just found it and it is from the Vermont Agency of Education. Be a long trail required form from the A O E. Um and it says it's uh independent schools, complete this form as it can impact school funding. And they had both options to complete online and print and mail. So the A O E is is collecting the information.
That's good, great, can you, is, could you send me a copy of that, just so I have it for my records?
Of the, of the form?
Uh or the not the ki- or the notification?
Sure, I can do one of, I can do both, actually.
Thank you.
It'll challenge me, but I can't.
Alright. Um my other question was on page uh. Eight, uh. It was, it was under the food service. Um.
The service is on page nine, oh, I'm sorry, it's on page eight, yeah.
So last year we have ninety two thousand and then there's nothing here on this line, so is it?
So I'm anticipating a decrease in our food service expense and that is uh mainly because. Two reasons, one mainly because it is a decrease in staff, so um Wells went from two staff members, one staff member. And Middletown also had a part timer last year, um and they now just have one position as well. Um Wells' position was more hours, so that had definitely had a a larger impact. Um and then there's also an increase i- in revenues, which. Is driving that the cost.
Okay. Where's that at? Is that going back to um on page seven where it says? Transfer out to reserve?
Yes, that first line.
Okay. Yeah, it's, that's how I remember that line, that that line for food, that's.
Yeah, and the details, so the details of that is what on page eight, so.
Gotcha.
If you look on page eight, that that bottom line in the right hand corner.
Yep.
Matches the FY twenty five budget.
Alright. And then um the other question I had was um. Uh well, going back to uh the small s- small schools grant, and then you said that the uh. The weighting is based on the student count, what was it, what's the student count, is it under a hundred pupils? Or? I just, I'm just curious, like.
They give you extra weighting based on the size of your school and how many students you actually have. Um so I, I mean, I can pull that number up, show exactly what we're getting.
But that, that is district, right, not individual schools?
Correct, e- well, now each school is qualifying for the small schools revenue. So the the small schools grant that you received prior was one number that was based on your, your unified district.
Right.
Uh in the new funding formula, each school qualifies as under the small schools, so each school is getting a portion of an increase in ADM credit.
Oh.
Again, it it is working out in your favor, I'll pull those exact numbers up in a minute.
Okay. Well, I know I get, it looks like it gets complicated, it starts, talks about sparsity weight, I don't know, like. Yeah, see, I thought that was for the district, I didn't realize that, even with this new weighting that it applies to each school, but.
It gets a lot better that way.
So you're receiving uh twenty six point two five additional pupil counts. So if you take the twenty six point two five times ninety four fifty two. You're getting two hundred and forty eight thousand, the equivalent of two hundred and forty eight thousand. Last year, you only received a hundred and seventy two thousand.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. Uh. Where, where does it, the updated election cost?
Uh so based on session last. Last meeting, I know nothing was officially approved, but I just made some estimates.
Okay.
Based on the request of the new clerk or the town's election cost. Um for each town's election cost plus the the higher uh clerk rate. But I think I added. Probably fifty dollars.
Okay. Where where's that at, that under?
Under professional services, under Board of Education on page six. Top, that top section, professional services, I budgeted two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. The budget there was fifteen hundred, so it's an increase of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
And that's just an estimate, I know the board can make a decision on how they want to go forward, but I wanted to make sure that we had funds in the budget. In case the board would that request.
Anyone else have questions about the budget? Concerns?
I know that Amanda had questions she wanted to bring up around transportation, but she's also, oh, is she here? Is she back?
Sorry, I'm, I'm back, yeah, I'm here, sorry. That's okay, is now a good time for me to ask those, or?
Yeah, any, anything budget related?
Okay, I was just wondering, um I didn't see anything in tonight's packet around transportation. Um but I know we had discussed at our last meeting, kind of taking a better look at it, and I guess my more direct question is. Um had we, had we really looked at moving to one bus, um based on what Carol gave us? It seems like all of our K through six kids would fit on one bus. Um and I didn't really see where it would extend the length of time they would be on the bus, given that they come. To school a half, well, the twenty minutes early and our other kids leave Pulteney twenty minutes early. Um so I, I wasn't sure if there was a deeper look into putting all of our elementary kids on one bus. And in saving that cost.
Don, is that because, does Don, you know, the roots and stuff like that?
Well, the, Don would develop, our bus company would develop it based on the information provided, but the board would have to provide parameters. Um okay, if we wanna go to one bus and we wanna make the time, time same, then we would give that information to the company and they would. Figure out how to, how, how we could do that and what we would have to change in order to do that.
Or if we, if we kept two buses, if if we felt there was a concern with going to one bus and they wanted to keep two buses. Then potentially there's another dollar amount that we discuss billing to Corey Valley for those secondary kids, rather than just the trip from Wells. To Pulteney, because it's really those high school kids that make us need a second bus as far as number of seats. And they would, the the timing wouldn't be much different because they wouldn't have to get there twenty minutes early and our secondary kids wouldn't have to leave early.
I mean, ultimately, this is a board, this is a board decision on, I mean, really what you wanna do. I mean, you know, you have the information as to what I'm currently doing. I mean, if you want, if you wanna have the cost savings and go down to one bus. Um I I guess we would need to. You to charge us with that and tell us the parameters that you. Or we can tell you what, what the impacts tho- that would have. I mean, wi- with the budget being down, the tax rate being down, I mean. Like, we're deciding whether you wanna make that cut now at this time, but it impacts potentially. Student transportation when you have a tax rate that's down.
That, right, that was my question, if, making sure I understood what you were saying, is that we are forecasted at this point with the current numbers to be. It like a two cent reduction in the tax rate, potentially greater given. The, the high forecast from the state treasurer, all of the factors that you're forecasting are high for us. So unlike last year where we were, where we were looking at options to cut. Our choice right now is to, do we leave this on the table or do we make the cut? When it's not necessarily forecasting to be needed.
And similarly, similarly. Similarly to last year, um our, because of our budget was up so significantly, we were looking at cuts. That's, we started the budget process so early last year, we didn't know any of the state factors. All we knew was that our expense was up significantly, so we started looking at cuts. But then on the last, in the last month, when we finally had that state data. Um all of that flushed out to us not having a tax rate increase and we decided that it wasn't, didn't make sense to make those cuts. And have student impact or family impacts when we have a tax rate that's not up. We have same situation this year, based on just our, our, our local information, we have a. An expense budget that's up, but with all the other state data that's coming in and the impacts of one twenty seven, we're seeing we have a tax rate. Um so you can make the decisions to cut and have a further reduction, or or you can continue to evaluate that and. Uh next year, you see that your budget's up, make those changes at that time.
Matt?
Hey, thank you, um I s- I still don't, I, I know we're. Potentially coming under budget compared to last year and that's great, um but. Isn't it this year, are we on a, in in a contract year with busing and? it's, it's not a bad idea, at least to build in contingencies for future years. So understanding maybe, you know, what that scenario would cost. I don't think is a bad idea what Amanda's, uh, a- and Amanda, I think, has already stated exactly what her preferences are in sort of figuring that out. And I think I agree with that. So could we get a quote for what that looks like and could we be certain that we can have a contingency for like, say, next year, we can get out of our contract or move down to the bus without any penalty to a single bus? Um, and it's, I don't think it's a wasted effort. I think it's good to have these contingencies for, for years that maybe we haven't perceived uh budget increases. Thanks.
I, I did provide that data at a previous meeting. I, I had a conversation with the bus company. And I provide the data that if we go down to one bus, it would cut the bus costs in half, as long as the routes were generally the same length of time. Um, if we're increasing the routes, um, so if the bus route is going to be an extra half hour per, per trip, so half hour in the morning, half hour a day, it would cut the costs in half, plus it would add thirty two dollars per hour to the contract. So if it's an hour per day, it's whatever the half of that cost is plus thirty two dollars times a hundred and eighty days. We're adding an hour to the route, then it's sixty four dollars. Um, in the morning, sixty four hours in the afternoon, sixty four dollars in the afternoon. So we, we have all of that information already. It's really, does the board want to make that decision to reduce the busing?
Okay, so just, if I could just add to that. So I guess the consideration then is, um, so that's helpful. I'd be curious to see, uh, Amanda was mentioning, uh, a share, potential share with Core Valley or whatever that bus is for the secondary students. Interested if we could offload some of that expense um, while maintaining two buses and uh either this year or next year. And then also, um, just to, just to see if we have any protection in a contract year for going down to a second bus in the next, say, four or five years. Um, if this is a contract year, no, it's for the next five years.
So the current contract does allow us to make changes mid-contract, um, for many different reasons. It allows us to make changes based on changes at students, based on changes in funding. So we have that flexibility in our current contract. Um, as far as the Cor- Corey Valley, so Corey Valley is paying for the bus that picks the students up at Wells School and brings them to Poltony High School. Corey Valley is not paying for the piece where you're picking up the students at their house and bringing them up at Wells. That, that tr- piece of the transportation is open to any secondary students. So students that are going to Granville, students that are going to Long Trail, Burn, Burn, any of those students have the option of hopping on those buses and bringing them to the Wells School. So it's not a Corey Valley bus run. It is a full Wells um, school district, uh, Wells Town bus run. It's open to, to all elementary and all secondary students.
Got it. Thank you.
And if I remember when we talked about this last month though too, you were saying that, you know, the buses aren't going out of their way to pick up secondary students. Correct? Because that was a concern as well, because if, if the buses were, as opposed to, you know, stopping where they pick up the elementary students, it's extending the, the time and the distance.
Correct. Removing the secondary students off the route would not change the price.
Okay. Uh, A- Amanda?
I, um, how much does Granville pay us?
Pay you for what?
Like, does Granville pay us anything to get their kids or they just send their own bus?
Granville sends their own bus to pick the students up. I believe there was an issue last, was it last year? And they were working with our bus company to, to bus those students. Um, but they, they're, they're paying the cost of bringing the students from Wells to Granville.
Okay, and, um, like as far as I, I understand, like you're saying, you know, all of the secondary kids could get on, but they really can't because our route is written around Poltony and it just happens to be that Granville can pick their kids up. That's why we get to school at seven thirty and then Poltony has to leave. Our kids leave at two thirty in the afternoon to get back to pick up Wells kids. So our secondary kids aren't even staying in school the whole time. So I think that if we're going to continue having them leave early and have our elementary kids get there late, then we either need to ask for a larger dollar amount from Corey Valley to cover the bus to accommodate their kids, which makes us need two buses for number of seats. Or we need another bus option where our kids don't, our elementary kids don't arrive early and our high school kids don't leave early. Cause we're really technically transporting secondary education that we're not supposed to. And we're also not offering equal and equitable if they're leaving early. So that's my problem with the bus, I guess. And so that would be a savings if we fixed that.
The Wells students are leaving Poltony High School?
Wells students leave Poltony High School at two thirty. Their day gets over at two forty five. So they leave fifteen minutes early every day. And there are times that they miss out on things that need to be done in the classroom, especially if it's a science lab or you know, something that's going on because they have to get back to pick up our elementary kids. So therefore we technically are paying to transport them and they're leaving early to accommodate.
I don't have the details of schedules that I'm not part of that equation. I think that's.
They, they should not be leaving school early to get a bus. That's great.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I think it just becomes a Corey Valley thing, like Corey Valley needs a bus, not us to have our kids leave early. We're paying for their accommodations.
All right, well.
The kids are.
Maybe that's something that can be looked into. Um, but aside from that, I guess, back to, um, the transportation and, and buses, um, I think, uh, you know, Carr brings up a good point about transportation, but you know, we did ask, you know, for some of this information at our previous meetings in regards to, you know, potentially cost-saving measures around transportation. You know, specifically, you know, could have, um, uh, a shorter bus route, different bus route, pickup locations. Uh, can those things get students to school in, in a timely manner? We're not spending time on the bus. And I think that's something that would be good to look into, uh, because if, um, there, there's different ways we can look at this. Um, and I know how everyone else feels, but, and you know, one bus picking up the elementary kids, um, for, for Wells or keeping two buses and having one for Middletown and one for Wells picking up elementary kids. So I think, you know, there's an element of, you know, equity in there too, but, um, I don't know. Uh, Matt?
Hey, I think this is all good discussion, but I, 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 I do wanna make sure that we follow up on the, the kids going home early because of just the busing. So I, I think that that's something we can't like, uh, just, I think that needs to be maybe um, an item for Chris. Is that something you could look into and give us an answer for?
Man, I think that really, you know, Corey Valley discussion around it there, uh, how they transport their kids back to Wells and whatnot, they provide a, a separate bus run. So that's something which, you know, Louis and I will bring, uh, to the board tomorrow night. Uh, cause I know that, you know, so that's something which we could take a look at around that bus run, about kids getting home, uh, having leave early.
Yeah, I mean, just, just to, just to.
Right. And, and Corey Valley may have to, you know, take a look at whether I'm running a separate bus. Uh, which, you know, gets his kids home on time, or they may look at whether they can transport the kids. So that's a discussion.
But, but I think at, at a minimum, these kids should be, you know, not missing labs. So that's really concerning. So I think, I think, yeah, go ahead.
That's, that's the discussion that we will have is that either A, we look at getting that, and you know, potentially get another bus so these Poltony kids can maintain a full day of school, or, uh, then they will look at whether they can provide transportation, because we do look at, there are busing issues as well. So um, if, if by, you know, shifting this, we may look at whether or not these students can be transported home from Poltony High.
May- maybe they should give us some money back since we're paying them. We, they could give us like money back per person and we can use it to, to give them the lab back when they get here. But I think that, I like, I'll just reiterate, they, they should be in the labs. I mean, I think that that's kind of ridiculous that we're pulling them early. So we should, we should take care of our students.
Okay. Any other further discussion on this? The budget, transportation?
I mean, if, if there's no objections to the budget in front of you, I mean, it would be my recommendation tonight to approve the budget. I mean, I didn't, none of the data that, I don't think any of the data that we'll get between now and next month will change, have a significant impact on the budget resulted making additional cuts. Um, you're happy with current tax rate. Definitely, it's your decision. You don't wait till next month.
I, I feel it's really important for us to get this information out to the public, so I kind of, I'm thinking I'm in favor of approving the budget now and, and, uh, letting people know, um, how relatively good this is.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would support putting it up for a vote tonight.
All right. Well, someone can put it to a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget as presented tonight.
Uh, any further discussion on the budget?
I guess before you actually vote, uh, since we're in discussion, one thing we haven't talked about tonight, which we may have talked about in the past is we don't, right now, we don't have a current, an, another article on the ballot to move any of the surplus to reserve funds. Um, see, if you did that, it would change your tax rate. I mean, I, I think in, in today's environment, going to taxpayers with a budget, tax rate that's down is definitely a positive sign. So I, I, I don't know that you'd wanna put money in a reserve fund if it's going to too much, at least too much of it. That would result in a tax rate that's up.
I saw that the surplus is in this budget and I was fine with that. I mean, um, that's, that's just my thoughts, you know, seeing how we, we, we did what, a hundred and twenty five thousand last year? For capital improvement, so.
I saw the hundred and twenty five, like article nine on the draft warning, and I assumed we were gonna do that again.
That's last year's?
That was just a carryover. It was, I think it was highlighted, um,
Right.
On the draft, just in case the board decided they wanted to do it again. Um, this budget does not represent anything.
Okay. All right. All right. So there's no other, uh, discussion. All those in favor of approving the budget as presented?
Sorry, quick, quick, quick question. So are we doing a reserve fund? Cause I'm, I'm not against that. Considering the aging of our buildings and do, does that have to be in place before we vote on the budget?
Yes. Yeah, we would have, if, if there's support for taking the surplus and do a capital maintenance fund, we would, it would have to, it would change this budget here. So.
But it's still accessible left the way it is, correct?
No, no, because the surplus from last year's in
Oh, right.
This budget, so. And keep in mind, we still have this, um, the surplus in the, uh, the capital maintenance reserve fund from previous year's budget. Okay. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right, um, so we'll do, we're gonna do a roll call really quick, just, uh, because it's not unanimous. All right, um, uh, so, um, so say yes or no, if you're in favor of approving the budget. Um, Meredith?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Okay, and okay, and then one, no. All right, motion carries. And we have a budget. All right, um, is that everything, Louis? What's that? Okay, that will move on to, uh, new business, uh, town meeting.
So these are just informational items, uh, just to confirm that the twenty twenty four information meeting will be February twenty eighth at Middletown Springs, seven P M. Uh, we had, and this has been all, on all the local districts about our potential carousel meeting. There will be no need for a carousel meeting for Wells Springs. Considering that you passed, uh, the budget tonight. Um, and what we can do around, uh, at the next meeting, if those confirm, we can have a warning uh, available to, for January, if the board approves, then we can, uh, collect signatures, those people who are present. Uh, it would be great to have as many board members present as possible, so we can get physical signatures as opposed to trying to coordinate uh, the following day. But if, if that's the case, then we will, we have to look at how we're going to collect those signatures. We just need a core signatures on the warning, but it does look much better where we have everyone's side of that. So.
All right. Yeah, so we can, you know, we'll just, uh, approve the actual warning next month. Uh, I did see that, um, other districts, instead of having all member signatures on there, um, they would just, it was just, uh, one signature for the chair to sign on behalf of the board, once it's approved. I don't know what people think about that as an option, because I know in the past collecting signatures is always kind of been, but just an idea. Um, I see on here that it says, um, for article seven, that it's, uh, the Middletown Springs term says two years, it should be three years. All right. All right, we're moving on to policy. Uh, that is, if no one else had any questions about the annual meeting. Matt?
Hey, just for the record, I'm, I'm good with you signing for, on behalf of the board.
What's that? Yeah, yeah, um, and then, well, on top of that, um, we don't actually have the warning. So I mean, okay.
Can make that change. We have two drafts for you, one with just the board chairs, signature, one with all. And then at the next meeting, the board can make a motion to approve.
Okay, yeah, if we can decide then, that sounds good, yeah.
If we don't have enough in person, then we could do that or something, I'd be fine either way.
Yeah, makes sense. Alright, alright, policies, alright, so we have, let's see. Four policies for adoption. Uh, B four, notice of non-discrimination, C one, board meetings, agenda preparation. Distribution, professional development, and weapons and firearms, uh, is there a motion to adopt those policies?
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Amanda. Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor? Any opposed? Alright, motion carries, alright, uh, the other two policies, um, are first reads now. Um, there's a driver's education policy in there, and just for, uh, those who don't follow the SU. Um, the policy committee, um, actually. Uh, other two districts in the supervisory union have their own driver's education policy, so. Uh, it was suggested at the policy committee meeting, why don't we have a GRCSU policy, uh, for driver's education? So that's how this came to be, um, it, uh, is pretty much like the one that we adopted earlier this year. But I think there was, uh, some, um, some language change in there. Meredith?
Yeah, I was wondering, the way I read it, uh, it said that we have, uh. Students that don't attend a Grixu school have to ask if they can get driver's ed. At a Grixu school before they can go out on their own, that first sentence.
Yep, yeah, so the idea behind that is, um. If, uh, if, if there's a driver's ed program within the GRCSU, student would be eligible to take that program. Um, rather than paying for it out of pocket, so I think.
But are those programs happening during the day, during the school day?
Well, Meredith, currently, yes, that is correct, that we have, uh, our driver's ed programs are part of our core values. We do, uh, have the option, and we are looking to have summer programming. Both because ours is during the year, just can't take that, but that's a, those scores, so. That's, I think, in this particular case, student could, could imagine the GRCSU summer program. Uh, if it was being offered at that time.
Okay, so, but is it required that it, that they take it through Grixu? Uh, that's what's not clear to me.
They have to, yeah, they have to at least try to attempt to take it in a, in, within the supervisory union first. And, you know, some of the discussions we had at the policy committee meeting was, you know, that. From, from like the Wells Springs perspective, that's not always the case, you know, um, and even if. There's a program available, I would have, they fill up quick, you know? So if you, you try to get in, um, to, let's say, if, if there's one in, if there is a summer program. Available in Rutland or, or Polley hypothetically. Um, and if one of the students, one of our students tried to get in and they couldn't, well, that's where the reimbursement comes in. So I think that's kind of the idea behind it, but yeah.
I, I just feel like that's. I, I, I don't, I don't think it's reasonable, um, I'm not sure it's reasonable for the Granville students. Um, to require, because the summer, they, you know, have other commitments going on and. Uh, I, I just don't understand how you can require them to try to get into a program. And then how do, how do you discern if it doesn't work for them? But it works for the program, you know, you know what I'm saying? It's, it's, you don't get both sides. I, I don't know, I don't see how the judgment is made as to whether they tried to get into a program. If they can't fit it in their schedule because of the location.
I, I don't know, I, I, the way I kind of interpreted this was that, um. If, if you were, if you were able to get into, uh, a program that's offered in the supervisory union, you wouldn't be paying out, you know?
And so it would only be the summer, that, that would be your only option.
Right, that's, that's the way I understand it, yeah, I mean, but. Exactly, you know, especially for, um.
Well, I, I feel like it's a bit of an obstacle, that's all.
Yeah, I guess I missed that piece too, so like if your student could potentially get their license in September. But now it's all school year, they have to wait until potentially in the summer and then. You know, they can't go, then now they're held up from their next steps because. Our supervisory union wanted them to wait and maybe go to Rutland?
I, I, man, I don't know, it doesn't ask anybody to wait, I think, uh, what it's really saying is that if we offer a program. They have to at least, you know, attempt to access that program, but if, if get the situation such as that. You know, we wouldn't be denying, you know, that, that individual come back and say. It makes no sense for me to wait till the summer and then I, I want to access the five hundred fifty to be reimbursed, you know, we're not looking to. Punish anyone, I think with this, the board offering, in fact, if we, we have slots available, that's, it's gonna access these slots. But if it doesn't work out for them, then we have money's available. We're actually trying to open this up to students. So they can act as, I think we're trying to limit things, we're actually just saying if we have spots available, that they have a right to access these spots as part of the GRCSU.
Okay, but if there, so if there is a spot, say we have someone coming from Middletown. And there is a spot available in Rutland, but it's, you know, forty minutes from them. But they could potentially go to Paulette where it's fifteen minutes, they could choose to still go to Paulette even if there's an opening in Rutland? Or would they be required to go to Rutland or not accept the reimbursement?
I think that's a discussion of the board.
Yeah, that, that's the part that was, was kind of bothering me, that is, how, how do you judge their accessibility? It's, it's.
Yeah. No, that makes sense, when you, when you put it this way, it makes sense, and so, you know, my response to that is, um, uh, do. You know, we can, this can go back, I mean, we don't have to, uh, we can have further discussions, but I would ask. I mean, do you have suggestive language that would bring back the committee, that would help clarify this too?
I feel like this is a case where the administrative process would come into play, like. Could the form that Chris creates for people to apply for this include, explain to us the efforts you've made. To access this, so that could capture the kids with September birthdays who can't wait till June to take the class? Or people who have jobs or transport siblings who can't wait, or who go to Granville and can't wait, like. I don't, this is intended to be an asset and not a barrier, so I feel like the administrative process.
So, Karen, I think that's, I agree, I think that's, that's something the board would wish for me, me to do, and look at the form. I think we have to understand, if five hundred fifty dollars is a reimbursement, that doesn't cover the total cost. And I think also, so I, when I, we look at this, and I, I'm saying this, and I don't know if the, the language captures this, and I think that's where, so we can bring this. Back to policy, but we're really trying to sit there and say to a, to a family in Wells or Middletown. Who is, you know, who's, let's say maybe a long trail, long trail doesn't offer driver's education, instead of family having to pay, like, it's, here's five hundred fifty dollars. Still paying three hundred, four hundred dollars out of pocket, we have a spot available that they can access in which save the family money, so they would not. Being paid out of pocket, so, so that's where, you know, I, I, the way I look at it is. If we have spots available in summer that these students have access to that, but we're not trying to deny access, uh, you know, obviously. That puts for a family, it might be more cost effective to access SU program during the summer. And save some money as opposed to take the five hundred fifty dollars, but incur the additional cost. And so that, 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 I think there might be some wording that needs to be done, but, so this is, when, when I sat down, we talked about this, it really was about providing access. For all students in our SU, uh, just to, you know, to eliminate costs potentially. And yes, there is a major hurdle that when we moved driver's education to, uh, it, it's part of our regular education program. But we did talk, and like, boost myself and the admins, about still offering a summer program for some of our students in school. Uh, for variety situations, as well as situations such as this, where there might be students within our SU who need access to a, uh, driver's education program.
I, I think you can solve it by not saying the student must first attempt and have been denied. You just need to explain the availability of the programs, this, particularly the summer program. But you, you just don't need to say must.
Uh, I think, you know, must offer some explanation of circumstances and efforts to access. Rather than must have documentation of denial or ineligible eligibility, I mean, I, I think there's a way to soften it and still gather the information needed. And if I remember the last time we did our policy, this is an incredibly underutilized resource. Like, we couldn't think that anybody had ever claimed this money. Or, or very, very few had, and so I, I think we should change that, cause we want people to be aware of resources, but also. For the few people that go through the effort to claim it, I feel like they will have the documentation, more likely than not, for why they're claiming the money.
Okay, um, alright, so we'll do that, we'll, we'll send this back and come back with, um, some, some more clarifying language. If everyone's alright with that, um.
Yeah, I would, I would hate for like, I mean, we had enough issues with the policy changing and the funding. For people to go through the whole process of doing, you know, expecting. The mu- five fifty and subsidizing it out of their own pocket, only to find out that they didn't ask the SU. If there was a spot for their kid, and now they're out money completely. That, that's, that's what this policy is telling me right now. Is that, uh, if, uh, if my kid, if I sign my kid up for, you know, Yankee Driving School, because that's what worked for our family. And I'm willing to pay the extra three hundred dollars, now I'm gonna find out after the fact. And yeah, I should have, I guess, found out ahead of time, but we already are having issues with, with these policies. Because they're also underutilized.
Okay, that makes sense. Alright, sounds good. Uh, Amanda?
I was just going to add, when, when we look at it again and go over, it also isn't clear, like, how do they ask the SU? Do they call Christine, and then she calls all the schools and says, do you have room for another student? Or are they expected to call every location in the SU, and where is that contact information, if that's the expectation?
Yeah, I don't know, that's a good one, I would, would imagine that, uh, in, in our situation. Where we have students that go to. Quite a few different schools, secondary schools, um, it can, uh. That would, that would definitely clear up on how to access these programs.
Maybe it just says, you know, that they must be offered a spot if available within our SU.
Yeah, well, you're on the policy committee too, so.
I know, it's always while I'm at work, five o'clock.
Okay, alright, so, we'll, we'll bring that one back. Alright, so we, the other policy is pre-K admission policy, are there any questions about this policy? If not, uh, we'll bring this back for adoption and. Um, if someone wants to make a motion to warrant it for adoption, uh, for next month.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, motion by Cara. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Alright, no executive session, uh, second public comment, uh, Heather, did you have anything tonight? No other public comment? Uh, Mary Beth?
Hey, um, yeah, so I just have a few things, um, to say, and I'll try to make it quick. Um, so, just a quick question, as of right now, as the budget is presented to you guys right now, we do have a surplus. Um, but that surplus will be used potentially to buy down the tax rate, am I, is that correct? I need you.
I guess, it's. So currently, in the budget that was presented, the surplus is being used to buy down the tax rate.
Okay, so having that said, I really wish, um, that we. Could think about using the money this year, that we didn't necessarily anticipate seeing. Um, only because, you know, we, considering we're losing key positions, um, so I looked back and Susan, um, has been with the district for twenty-six years. And she's currently making forty-four K, um, I know there's not enough staff, um, in each school. Um, I know Kristen Caroline came back to me today and said, hey, mommy, today was, you know, kind of an unusual day, both Mr. Cannon and Ms. Williams were. Abstinent, and, um, Ms. Smith had to step in and teach both first grade and second grade. Um, and also I know that just bringing up the AC and heating, um, systems aren't updated in either of our schools. Um, so when I see Scott, um, which is the managing director of our properties, you know, in the parking lot, and we give a wave. Um, I know that he's dealing with, um, the two oldest school dist- or the, I'm sorry, the two oldest school buildings in our district. Um, so having that said, um, I just had two more quick, um. Opinions on, maybe we could possibly considering, um, incentivizing the paperwork for the free and reduced lunch. I know that, um, FFE had been talking about scholarships and how we should come up with, um, those parameters. Um, but when Cory and Susan both came back to us saying that, using the information off of the free and re- reduced lunch paperwork. That families choose to fill out, not all families choose to fill out that paperwork. So I'm just wondering if there could be a raffle, or, you know, a gift card, or something that could incentivize families and maybe getting kids involved. Um, I can't remember if it gives personal information and if maybe that deters, um, some families from filling that paperwork out. Um, and then, yeah, and then last, um, thing I would say is that as a sub for, um, a few days at Middletown Springs. Um, which I love, because I know the kids, I know the staff, um, I would love to see like a program that I could step into. Where like I could shadow, um, maybe a Wells teacher for the day, so like. Um, she would be like, you know what, if there's a fire drill, you know, this is your paperwork right here, or this is how we use the intercom if you need help, or. You know, these are where the, you know, the teacher bathrooms are, um, so I think I was a little intimidated going to other schools. Because I was so unfamiliar with those, with that, um, that big task of having a new student population and a new school, so, um. And I think that might drink, bring more people in, um, that would substitute at their homeschool and then maybe branch out to other schools. Um, considering it seems like, when I look at the schedule for subs, um, you know, each school is really in need of someone. E- every day or every other day throughout, throughout each week, so, um, yeah, so those were my couple points, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mary Beth. Uh, Heather, are you there?
Yes.
Did you have any, uh, comment for tonight?
Eric, you know I always do, um. Hang on one second, I just made a couple of quick notes. Um, I guess last year, and I missed the first couple minute, couple seconds of Mary's, um. Comments, but I believe that last year, the budget process was sort of finalized by, in February. Prior to the, um, town meeting day. And it would have been great if some of the townsfolk could have reviewed it prior to today's meeting to provide commentary. Um, I'm a little bit concerned about this. I'm a little bit concerned about the school climate in Middletown Springs, to be honest. Particularly because of Susan's sudden departure after 25 years of service. I would love for her to have her voice heard about the reasons for her decision to leave. I did complete the survey that went out to parents. It's such a small school, I think it would be more useful to get. People in the same room to have a conversation. And then my final comment is just about scheduling, once again, Middletown Springs is a super small school. And somehow, we're gonna have winter sports, the winter sports program on Monday, immediately followed by the rock climbing. It's a conflict that most families can't deal with, because they can't either pick up their child in. Rutland, or at Pyco. Wait, wait for an hour and a half until rock climbing starts, and then wait an hour and a half for rock climbing. You know, likewise, it's kind of an almost impossible feat to pick up in Middletown Springs, and then. Bring your child who was just passing by the rock climbing walls back to Rutland to rock climbing for an hour and a half practice, so. There's just some things that I, as a parent, am concerned about. I, I feel that I've reached out to the principal at Middletown Springs several times, and I kind of like get a. I would say like 40% response rate, so it's concerning to me, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Heather. Okay.
Can, can I just ask a clarifying question, I know it's public comment. Did I, Susan's resignation is not effective immediately, I did not, did I miss that detail, it looked in the records that it was effective. Like a year from now, or maybe, am I misunderstanding what was written in her resignation letter?
The end of June.
Next year, next year.
It's the end of the 2024, 2025 school year, so it's actually 18 months' notice of her intent to retire. So she, I think, she may be, you know, approaching 30 years when she actually leaves our service, so. I just want to clear, I just want to make sure I was not misunderstanding the documents, thank you.
That, that is correct, and that just pertains to. Language in the agreement.
Just often confused, where there are people who will notify a year and a half. Because the language is a little confusing, that's a difficult word, so notify as well in advance.
Yeah. Okay, alright, so our next meeting is January 10th. I don't think.
There is a hand up, Eric, I didn't know if you wanted to address that.
That was, that was Mary Beth, she already, she already asked.
Yeah, Eric, I just had one quick, one more thing, and then I'll let you guys go, I'm just wondering with the, with the, the. The surplus that we're using to buy down the tax rate, I've, I think you said around 125K. I'm just wondering if there's any way that we could let. The families know that may ask me, or may ask one of the school members, or Heather, what that really equates to, as far as, you know, the dollar amount that you would potentially see. In a savings for, for, you know, each family, or depending on, you know, what parameters the taxes are. I know that could be more than I would think it, or it could be less, I'm just wondering if there, if we could somehow. Just run those numbers and see what really, you know, we're saving each family, and that, and that, and buying the tax rate down with the surplus.
Well, that's stuff we can have for the annual meeting for sure. Alright. Well, since we approved the budget, we don't need to change our meeting?
If that's your call, I mean, I will have more data next month as far as.
Okay.
The, we should have a better number on the long-term waiting to have, and go up for CLA data.
Okay.
The yield still will be pending.
Yeah.
But those other two pieces should be a lot firmer than they are now.
Okay, so. So yeah, the suggestion is Louis can't make our January 10th meeting, so can everyone attend the January. Attend the meeting on January 3rd, a week earlier instead, so that way he can bring us this information.
January 3rd is fine with me.
Is that moving the meeting from the 10th to the 3rd, or a special meeting on the 3rd?
Nope, moving it to the 3rd.
Then, yes, the 3rd works for me, I mean, it works for me either way, but just, yes.
Yep, works for me.
Okay, Matt?
I'm sorry, everything's so fluctuates here, I think so, it's my best guess, sorry.
Okay. Sue?
Put it in.
Put it in, okay.
That's all I can do.
Alright, so, alright, we'll do that, we'll, we'll, we'll do the 3rd and hope for the best, I guess. Alright, so that's it. We'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, motion by Matt to adjourn at 7:57. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries.
Thank you.